The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Too many on at the same time.
I have to turn it over to Mr. Hook briefly.
We were all heartbroken when we heard the news that Beth Jamison had passed away early this Monday morning. Beth is a 32-year veteran teacher and a true blue Panther. She was our high school vocal music director as well as our musical director. She was just a wonderful, caring, committed teacher and nurtured the love of music for scores, Springboro students. We all feel a deep void. And I would ask all of you to bow your head in the moment of silence as we remember Beth, her family, her students, her colleagues, and this community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Item 1.2 is the adoption of this agenda.
The Andersons?
Yes.
Shad? Stukey?
Yes.
Palache?
Yes.
Yes. Item 1.3 is the approval of October 27th, 2021. It's meeting minutes. May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second.
Andersons?
Yes.
Shad? Yes.
Yes.
Palache?
Yes.
Yes. You have a special presentation this evening. Item 2.1, turn it over to Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Board members, Ms. Stacy. Tonight, I want to introduce one of our seniors at Springboro High School, Alex Trier, who's going to talk about an Eagle project. Alex has spent a ton of time planning this project and also a ton of manual labor. As he'll go through his pictures, and you can see it sometime out by the pond, the project he completed with wood, help and assistance. I also do want to thank Mr. Scott Gilmore, our Director of Operations, because he was a huge asset to this as far as the subbing of the plane with some of the drilling and some of the building that was going on out there and areas to stay away from by the pond. So I also want to thank Mr. Gilmore as well. So without further ado, let Alex go ahead and take the podium from here and talk to you about this Eagle project.
Hello. I believe so. Go ahead. Testing. Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you. I'm pretty far away.
So I recently finished my Eagle project that was built in the pond behind the Springboro High School. It is used by the fishing club for their club activities, as well as some students and their teachers go out during nice weather to do their classwork out there. So the reason behind building that pond, basically, like I said, the students going out there for clubs and their classes to use it, I wanted them to have a place to sit, write, do pretty much whatever they wanted, but just not have to stand there and just be out there in comfort rather than not. So what does this contribute? It contributes not only a place to lie and a place to sit, but it mostly adds to the aesthetic of the pond, the beauty of it. People who own their palm or homegrown boats can also go back there now, they can sit down, they can take their photo that they want. And it also helps people like that are walking, running, doing any type of physical activity, whether it be cross-country, track, wave just teachers out walking that you see occasionally, give them a place to sit down and just get out on and kind of relax for a bit. So just a little bit of thought that went into this, where it goes to, use just some drawings of, that would be initial drawings in CAD for how we're going to make these, how do we make these sturdy, how do we make them long-lasting, and how can we create a good viable product that will stand up for the test of time? Basically, we had one installment day, we had about, if we go back, the construction took across roughly three weeks. We had two official workdays and three in-house workdays that were just small, we had like one or two people come and touch up any flaws, put it together, do the drilling and all that. Installation took only one day because we decided we didn't want to leave holes out there, we didn't want to leave materials out there for people to trip on or mess with. So we got it done all on November 7th, and we had about 14 people help with that project, pretty much all them students of Springboro High School except for like one or two. And just some photos of the workday of the all three workdays. Bottom right, we have the first workday, bottom left, we have the second workday, and everything else is from the installation day. And that's just the finished product. Now we have some, if you guys want to take a look, some, maybe we have free time, get back there and ready whenever you want it.
Is it?
Yes.
True that Mr. Martin's been seen back there, man?
Even though I've been seen back here many times, because the joke is that it's Martin's pond. So now he's making a joke that I spent some time back there with the fishing club, which I do, it's true. That's true.
Have you got proof of all the snapping turtles out with them?
I do not believe so, no.
When I was teaching, we had to carry a couple of them from this back part and put it back in the creek. They're still there.
They're still there, right?
Alex, talk us a little bit about, you know, as far as the building, the concrete, how far down it went, just kind of, if you want to go any details with that, that way they kind of know what went into as far as the manual labor side.
Okay, yes, as far as the manual labor, let's just start installing, since it's easier. Once we actually got into the pond and we unloaded them, we took our tractor that we have, that our family has, we drove it down there and started just drilling holes at multiple locations that we marked beforehand. We got it cleared with 811, we got it cleared with the, with the...
Director of Operations.
Yes. Made sure that there was nothing in the area that would be harmed after drilling. So when we started, hit some clay, hit some rocks, nothing too bad. Then we ended up putting what, I think, 16 to 18 inches into the ground, and then concreted it up about halfway of that. About, what was it, a bag and a half per hole, about a 60-pound bag of concrete, covered it up, put a black trash bag, stapled it to the ground, over the overturned dirt, and then put bubbleized mulch, because one of the big selling points was, you guys aren't going to have to wee-whip or mow under it, there's not going to be, have to be extra labor painted, because it's both, the wood's weather-treated and the paint is weather-resistant.
Had you ever done projects like this before, or was this your first time doing something to this level?
Of this scale, this is one of my first projects doing this.
That's impressive. So did you have to do fundraising to earn the money to get your supplies?
Well, about that, thankfully, Home Depot, both the Eleven and my Englishburg locations, I got them to donate the around $350 of materials that took to go into this, and then our family donated the extra bits and ends that we needed to finish project or correct some problems as far as building it.
That's great. Nice legacy that you're leaving behind when you come back and can see it, unfortunately, I guess. And thank you for putting your time into it, where you put that in.
That is a nice addition, obviously. I don't know if any of you remember what it used to look like years ago, it was just overgrown and, I don't know, it's probably been 15 years they cleaned it up.
Is that an area that people can actually fish from, like from the actual where you live?
Oh, yes, I went out and looked and mowed at the areas where, because we were good fishing ourselves, where it would be good pole in the line, we didn't put it next to any weed or where moss seemed to clump. I did try to get some black ground that was, that was conducive to fishing.
Are you presentable today?
Thank you for negative versus literature from you did your project, that's great. Appreciate it. Scott, do you want to do a picture for?
Yes. Sure. Absolutely. Come on up. Or you can say it, but you can explain it again.
What else? Can you come back to the interview?
All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Scott, great job.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Item 3.1 is an executive session, and we're going to discuss whether returning matters to the subject pending or imminent court action. Kind of a motion to enter executive session, and we will continue the meeting after our executive session.
Second.
The Andersons? Shad? Yes. Stukey?
Yes.
Palache?
Yes.
Yes. We will return briefly. Section here, we're going to move on to section four, this is public participation. Item 4.1, we get anyone from the Springboro Education Association this evening. Okay, item 4.2, would anyone from the Springboro Black Lives Association? We have just one, pre-ranged public speaker. Scott?
Should I?
Sure. Yeah, I can get your mic.
We're going to get a light for this, so we got a...
Where am I?
My name is Nina Waverly-Somon, and I'm at 8066 Center for Public Health. Respect and members of the school board, Mr. Hook, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Saturday, November 6th, 2021, Isabella Tishner, a 10-year-old Black student at Foxborough Elementary School in Salt Lake City, took her oath of life. Parents empowered all children of color sends its deepest sympathy to Isabella's family and friends. We cannot imagine the pain they are feeling to stand in Salt Lake area with them. We also send our condolences to her classmates, the students and faculty at Foxborough Elementary School, and Davis School District in Utah. Her mother, Brittany Tishner, said she was dyslexic and on the autism spectrum, and other children recognize her differences covered in the bullying. Izzy's tragic death comes on the heels of the Department of Justice announcement on October 21st, 2021, of a settlement agreement for Davis School District due to the severe racial harassment of minor working students. The Davis School District is now recognized as a district that needs a lot of support and assistance in order to make their schools better for all students. PECOP would like to express its gratitude to the Springboro Community Schools' school board, superintendent, administrators, and faculty, excuse me, for listening to the concerns brought forth by the students and parents, and for taking action. PECOP is especially appreciative of the members of the diversity and inclusion community, and we're committed to bringing diversity, equity, and inclusion to Springboro schools. PECOP asked the school board to urge Springboro families to have conversations with their children about the impact of these various orders and actions, especially around race, disability, and gender identity. Izzy's death is a tragic reminder of why we all need to be mindful and considerate of our words and actions and how they can hurt others. PECOP also asked the school board to encourage parents to check on their child's mental health, as well as talk about sad and hurt feelings, and how to manage and deal with these feelings. The diversity and inclusion committee will soon be making recommendations to the school board, and PECOP will so over to the school board's approval and implementation of these recommendations. We must all work together to prevent such tragedy. Mean things do not need to be said at earshot of a child to have a negative impact on that child. I have been out of high school for 30-plus years, but reading Izzy's story brought back painful memories of my own high school experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.4, this is public participation on any of the, this is section, starting section six, the treasure section through section 10. We are going to move to section five, this is our work session, item 5.1, is public participation on work session items 5, 2 through 5, 10. Okay, we are going to move to item 5.2, turn it over to Mr. Rhodes for athletics.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm speaking about our out-of-state travel trips proposals. I've asked, these come every year, anytime that we were to take a trip out of state, I've asked for our coaches to plan to do so, to submit those at one time so that I could present those tonight. One of those is our varsity cheer national championship trip that comes in February. This also includes our varsity baseball trip, varsity men's lacrosse, and varsity softball, varsity JV softball, and all three of those take place over spring break. So all of these trips, none of them take school funds, they're all fundraising, they all involve families that are either paying in fee or fundraising to pay for all of that trip. All of the transportation in each of these trips is provided by the families, and all of the trips except for baseball, they are staying with the families. The baseball trip, they have a, they have a deal down in Vero Beach where they're scheduled to go, where they have suites down there, the teams and the coaches stay in, stay off-site, and they're provided three meals a day as part of their fee. So they're all staying together, chaperoned by the coaches the entire time, other than the time that would be given to spend with families during the trip. So that's all of the trips, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, item 5.3, your...
Right on.
Yep.
Okay. So next is our athletic, our athletic boosters and our school district agreement to transition our fundraising, athletic fundraising accounts to the athletic boosters. So this has been something that Stacy and I have been talking about for a long time, and we've tried to get in a position to where we can make this happen. So brief history, not to get too long into it, was this, boosters used to hold all of our team's fundraising accounts. Things occurred, we took them back, and now we're in a position that we've been working with boosters over the number of years, to get in a good position to make this transition. So this agreement, as you've seen, outlines all of the terms, we've worked with school attorneys, I've worked with the booster side, and making sure that everyone felt comfortable. We're talking about a year and a half, 18-month agreement to make sure that we are, that there's nothing that we need to work out, we don't want to make the terms too long so that we could revisit the contract if we needed to and make any adjustments over that time.
Fundraising would go back to the boosters?
Yeah, so starting January 1st is how we have the terms, so any new fundraising would go into their booster team accounts. We would still hold their accounts that currently have funds, and they would need to spend those down over a period of time. We can't transfer that money to the boosters, so they've got to spend that down, any new money fundraised would go to booster accounts.
I was on the athletic council when we were discussing this, and who is your treasurer, the treasurer for the boosters?
Inga Fisher.
I was very impressed with the questions and the answers that she had. I just feel very confident in her tracking and the way that she was working. I think that there's not going to be any concern, and just, I know the conversation for this that Stacy has had, the amount of time that it's taking for the administration to work through and do what we need to legally in order to do all of this, has taken a ton of extra time for our administration, which typically this is done through boosters. So while I appreciate all that the district has done during this time that we needed to take it back, I'm encouraged that we've got a good, stable organization in place, and they truly know what needs to be done to run it the way that these be run, and they've got everything taken care of with the 501(c)(3) status and all the groups. There really was, it was neat to hear the conversations among the teams, and I think that there's, everybody's very much on board all the different organizations, so it was a very encouraging meeting to hear the conversations and the confidence of being ready for this.
And we also wanted to set this, the bones of this, and have it very clearly outlined what the role for everyone was, because there's no guarantee that any of us will be here the next time this comes up, or 10 years down the road, and we'd like for this to, the next people on the boosters to come in and read the gear and understand where we are. So we've taken a lot of time to outline exactly how each party feels of this should go.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, so this would be voted on at the summary. All right, thank you.
Okay, Professor, substitute teacher qualifications.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm asking you to consider a resolution tonight to allow us flexibility under Senate Bill 1, which was signed into law by our governor, to modify our requirements for our substitute teachers to work in our district. We go with the COG, and currently we require a college degree in order to sub in our classroom. The governor is giving school districts temporary flexibility for a year, because like everybody else, we are realizing a serious labor shortage. Our teachers are tired, their planned time is being taken up daily, which is going to affect instruction. So we are hoping, just like with the Reach magazine ad for the bus drivers and recruitment efforts with bonuses and incentives, that maybe we've got some amazing people in our community that will pass a background check, their references are going to be great, and they are of good moral character, and they can come help us out in the classroom.
Any questions from the board?
So since they don't have to have a 40 degree, is there anything that if they pass the background check, like are there any other things that you're looking for, just so that we can help share this information out for people?
It's going to be helpful if we have some strong references, you know. Our principals know great people in the community that they've already reached out and say, you're here to volunteer, come on in and pay for what you're going to do. The COG does offer a, you know, a little bit of some training, and then we will be very hands-on to make sure that these visiting teachers are, they feel comfortable in our buildings.
So if there's somebody that has stayed home with children for years, and they don't have much of experience or reference in that way, but they have volunteer experience, that would be something that's worth while investigating, whether this is a good event? Thank you.
Okay, item 5.6, this is for, can you give us a... Oh, Mr. Hook, sorry. Item 5.5, this is our smart board.
Thank you, Mr. Hook.
I got you.
I have for you two quotes for smart boards and clever touch boards as a continuation of our conversation from the past four meetings, these will be purchased with willing funds from rate that we have received. This will fulfill all core classrooms in the elementary level for clever touch boards. We still both have some secondary classrooms that we will look at in the years to come to place boards, and that this will fulfill all core classrooms at the elementary level.
Do we have it getting the same price as the last?
That's a great question. We did, they did raise the price of the boards, but they gave us a good faith of offer, because as soon as you approved those boards, we called them the next day and said, we're interested in getting quotes. They said they've gone up, we said, we just make purchase with you, is there any way? The gentleman talked to their superior, and they were able to give us the same price.
Great job.
I think if we told off, that probably wouldn't have happened.
That's great. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay.
This will be very short. The Heart Fund Education requires that we now do an annual report to the board, just to certify that the items we offer for sale to students during the school day meet the USDA requirements. So that is why I am here. Obviously, you know our board policy does include all of that. It looks at the school day, it's kind of a strange timeline, but the school day is from midnight until 30 minutes after the end of the school day. I don't know how they randomly picked midnight. I'm not here at midnight, but just in case you are, you have to follow those guidelines for if you're selling something to students. So that incorporates not only my department, what we're selling at lunch, it would include any fundraisers that are actually held on school ground during that time, the school store, and I know they're really hoping to reopen the store here again this year, and it's been closed about a week now for eight. It's never been open since I've been here. We were ready to open, then we closed the very next day due to COVID, so it's announced that idle for a couple more years, so they are hoping to reopen that, and they understand that they would have to follow those guidelines. I believe their plan is to open before school and maybe the first three periods, and then lunch starts the fourth period, so they would close at that time. So it looks at the types of foods that you're able to offer. It does not, the regulations do not cover concessions that obviously are done on school grounds, it doesn't affect fundraisers that are held off of school grounds. And the way that we look at, for instance, food items that are not sold to students but are consumed here, class parties in the elementary come to mind for me, those are governed by the individual building, by the administrator there, and typically in cohort with the school nurse, so that anything that they're giving to a child during that class party, that we're making sure that it's a safe food for the students that are in that classroom. We also have to report on wellness policy. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to meet for a couple of years before, because of COVID. We typically meet two to three times a year, and that is chaired by our head nurse, Franklin Patterson, who does a fabulous job. And it does date in our wellness policy, what types of items, it talks about the school day, it talks about the times of day that it can be excluded, so we just have to look at, make sure that all of that is in that wellness policy, and it is, and so I am just here to tell you that we are in compliance with that. And then for those of you that are not familiar with Smart Snacks, but are interested to know, there actually is a calculator, a Smart Snacks calculator, that I use for items sold, and you just plug in the items that they're looking for. We have to look at calories, we look at fat, saturated fat, can't have any trans fat at all. We look at sodium limits, we look at sugar limits. There are specific beverage standards for children based on the age of the child, so the older the child, the, we are able to offer them a few more items. And then it also looks at what the actual ingredients are in that food, so is it a whole grain rich food, so if it's a grain, it has to be 51% or more. So, if it's a grain, it has to be 51% or more whole grain. So, we look at that and we look at, is what the first ingredient is in that? Is it a grain? Is it a fruit, vegetable, dairy, or protein? So, the SMART calculator, I do make that available, you can find it online. But for those that are doing a fundraiser, that they want to hold here, they want to know, is that, you know, can I sell this item? They can just plug it in or give me that information and we plug it in and in about less than a minute, it's going to say it's compliant or not compliant. The state actually looks at those items, like, we are required by the health department to have nutritional information for every item we offer to students. They're quite thick. They are in every school, at every survey line. And if it's a snack item, we actually put that sheet in there that shows that it's SMART snack compliant. So, when the state comes in, they can see that we already went to the trouble to do that and they don't have to go back and follow up behind us. So, I am just here to let you know that you're doing our best. This year is a little tricky, there are a lot of waivers out there from the state because of COVID and the inability that we are faced on a daily basis to get food into the schools to serve the students. So, they have given us a little bit more flexibility as long as we are showing we are making an effort to purchase those items. Those are the items that are on the bid and if we can't get them, what are we substituting? And this is the reason why. So, we track all of that as well. Any questions? I can answer my food service.
Complicated. Appreciate what you're doing.
Never knew.
We appreciate it. Item 5.7 is Mr. Ford and Side Effects.
Mr. Board President, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to say that Mrs. Ford does a tremendous job. In the short time I've been here, I mean, watching food service and the effort they give every day for kids and making sure the kids get their proper nutrition is tremendous. And I want to certainly congratulate her and her staff. They put in a lot of time and energy and effort. So, they do a great job, along with the rest of our class plan staff. So, we're very appreciative of the effort they give. We're bringing before you this evening the master sponsorship agreement here with, actually, Side Effects. This is an agreement that's been in place for quite a few years here in the district. It's a good partnership that we have. When we started reviewing contracts with Stacy and Mr. Rhodes, we started looking at this and they just acquired Power App. And so, we thought it was a good time to come back and take a look at the contents of the agreement. So, this agreement is just a three-year, new three-year agreement with them. It contains the terms and conditions that we previously had and the other agreements that the district had with them. So, any questions with regards to our specific agreement?
Just to clarify, we did end up getting this reviewed by all board members.
That is correct, yes. Yeah. That is through them.
I don't think it's something worth mentioning what I asked in email, because I was curious as to what has benefited our district. And we've had them since 2014 and it has benefited us $400 and some thousand dollars, right? So, it's a very, I mean, you said that typically a company will do 50/50 and maybe 65/35. So, it's a win-win for us because they do all the work and we get a lot of benefit from it. So, I think it's nice because it's a local family that is also, we're supporting local. So, I think it's a great, it's a great thing for our district.
It's a good partnership.
Yeah.
Can I go back even further because they did the, the boards or the advertising and mascots?
Yeah, it goes quite a ways back, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's how they started.
Went all over the same place.
Right. Yeah, started with a college board and continued on from there. Very positive.
Any other questions? 5.8, I was starting to move on with you. This is the window contract, I believe.
Yes. The district has done a tremendous job of continuing to look at and value certainly the buildings and looking at infrastructure improvements. This is actually a phase five of the window replacement program. Capital Windows has done a really nice job. I've talked to a lot of people. They're very impressed with their installation and the window systems they put in. The section that we're doing this year was a collaboration actually with Mr. Martin. We talked to him about where we thought we needed to put these windows and he was in full agreement that this is a good location. So, we're just continuing that program.
Reminding, how many phases are there?
This is phase five. We were talking that probably either one or two more, possibly two more phases that we'll need to do.
And then, how long will we have before we start?
Well, then, we'll do the next building, you know. So, hopefully, these windows have a nice warranty on them. They're like 10 to 15-year warranties on the window systems that we're putting in. So, they do a really nice job, Capital Windows does, and they're on the call when we need them. So, they've come back on any instance we had. So, they've done a really good job.
But it has taken us a while to go through all of our phases.
Oh, yeah.
We're not going to have that big of a break before we can just start with our phases again. You ready?
Could be, yeah.
I think one thing that I want to consider is will we do kind of go around the corner there, maybe we do bigger chunks instead of six or seven?
Right, right.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, that's a long process.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. I got you. Yeah, I'm thinking. Yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Item 5.9, our committee reports. We have three reports tonight. We're going to start with the DNI and Mr. Ford's office.
Just a quick update. We didn't have a whole presentation. Committee started off, Mr. Colajah had shared concerns and ideas and thoughts about transparency for all of our committees, not just the DNI committee. There'll be a review of all those committees within the board and order treaty to discuss to have that kind of dialogue with the entire board. So, they shared that. Tiffany Taylor Smith discussed some of the group recap meeting, which was predominantly surrounded what I call the borough ambassadors. It's just the name I grabbed, so. About their thoughts and ideas and the ideas will be presented by Mrs. Lightcap. Also, Mrs. Taylor Smith also shared with us that December would be her last meeting as a facilitator for the DNI committee. Tiffany has just been appointed as vice president of diversity and inclusion for the University of Dayton. So, we certainly wanted to extend our congratulations and best wishes to her as well as the university. So, with that, Robin, parent of the committee, and I, there's others here you have having. I'm going to let you introduce that. I'm just going to turn it over to Robin Light.
Thank you, superintendent. Thank you, board members, for the chance to share a lot of things with you all. Lena, I think you'll hand our air as well.
If you want to hit.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
Yeah, just push the button on there.
Right on the middle.
There we go. I'm sorry. So, I'm pleased that Yolanda and Lena are here as well. I think if we have others on the committee, I know some of our members are as well. So, I was the person who offered to write up some of the ideas we were talking about in our staff committee, so somehow that means I'm the one presenting. So, I really, I say that because I'm representing the work that's coming out of the committee. And I just want to start by thanking you all as a school board for being willing to prioritize diversity and inclusion. I know it's a really sensitive and sometimes difficult topic and I really applaud you as Sprint Borough School Board to just be willing to take this on and prioritize it. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve on it. So, one of our ideas, and this is just one of the ideas that's been discussed, we want to share with you this proposal. And I started by saying too, that most of us in the committee are not staff people of the district and so we don't pretend to understand all the nuances of how to really operationalize this. So, these are simply suggestions that need to be taken by those of you who work in the district every day and really figure out what makes sense to operationalize something like this, should you choose to go forward with it. So, the idea is to launch a staff diversity and inclusion task force. So, we have this DNI committee that's been meeting, made up of community members and some staff, but the idea is to really embed it into the ongoing operations of the district. So, I'm just going to share some ideas with you about how that can be operationalized. This is the mission statement that was developed by the DNI committee. Simply that Sprint Borough City Schools, DNI committee works with administrators, faculty, staff to create inclusive, respectful, supportive environment. That's free from discrimination, racism, victimry, harassment, and all of that. So, really just taking, making proactive steps to create a welcoming environment that's inclusive of everyone. So, the big idea, as I said, is to create a place where staff can proactively participate and just really empower the staff, whether we call them task force members or ambassadors, doesn't really matter. But the idea is to have people on the staff who say, "Yes, I'm willing to champion this and proactively create a really positive welcoming environment for all of our staff and our students and parents as well." And so, some ideas that we talked about for responsibilities of the task force members is obviously taking the lead, championing the values of equity and inclusion and really identifying issues and barriers that students and teachers face. So, I know some, Lena and others have shared some things that our students have faced. So, just really empowering at the school building level for those conversations to be able to happen. And then, these task force members would really be responsible for helping to implement solutions. It might be that there is training for other teachers and staff, or book discussions, or ongoing learning communities. We've talked a little bit about creating safe places for students, so perhaps there's a sign that says, "Hey, if you have any concerns, I'm a person that you can talk to." And then, just being really proactive and evaluating progress, thinking about things that we could start to measure as we do this work. The commitments that we were proposing is that the task force members would meet monthly after school. And again, this isn't getting into the details, but one thought we had is maybe there's one meeting for sixth to 12th grade staff and one meeting for pre-kingdom fifth, because we know those buildings operate on different schedules, so after school, that's different. And then, that these folks would participate in DNI training on an annual basis outside of the district, so that they're just being, you know, they're learning about things that are happening in other places as well, in that they would develop and implement action plans for each building. So, there's a lot of text on this one, but the general idea is that since we're already partway through the school year, the idea would be to just identify one staff person from each of the six buildings to be part of this initial year. We were proposing that it could be led by the assistant superintendent. I have not talked with you all about that and so, obviously, again, that's something that needs to be figured out, who is the right person to lead it. But obviously, we would need somebody in the district to really be taking the lead on it. So, we have one person from each of the six buildings. They would meet monthly. You know, we are suggesting that they be supported by some type of outside DNI expert facilitator who can suggest good ideas that are happening in other districts around the state or the country. And we are proposing that the members are paid a stipend. We really just think that sends a message that the district thinks this is important and values it like it does other clubs and commitments that teachers pay. And then, the idea is to take those six months, or I guess it would end up being more like four or five by the time it would get started, figure out some ideas for next year and then recruit additional staff to participate in the 2022, 23 school year. So, at that point, we'd be looking for more like maybe two to six people from each of the buildings and have a bigger group of 15 to 20 members, but this is an idea of how we could ramp it up. The selection process, pretty straightforward. We would be looking for people who are going to openly embrace and value differences in students and are willing to engage in these sensitive and sometimes difficult conversations. Maybe they already demonstrated the desire. We know that some staff had applied or are participating on the DNI committee, so that might be a major concern. And just maybe people who have expressed an interest or previously attended training. And this is a draft timeline. Obviously, today, we're here sharing this idea with you all as a school board. Maybe in December 15th, if you all choose to go forward with this, we could do some type of application process and have staff apply. And then, January 7th, try to select them. February, have an initial meeting. These monthly meetings, February to May, with that initial six-person group. And then, do applications for the next year. So, just a thought to try to help move it forward. We did draft out potential application questions that are obviously very straightforward, where they can tell us some basic information and also a little bit about how they see wanting to support this. And we also put some tangible things here about would you be willing to do these types of things, just to get a sense from people how they can feel about participating? I think we've really talked about all of these already, but a lot of it has to do with creating a safe ways, participating in discussions, training, et cetera. And then, just the suggested next steps would be figuring out if you want to do this and who would actually lead the task force internally, figuring out the stipends. I understand there's a process, certainly that it needs to be followed for stipends that would be offered to staff to do this. And then, creating and distributing this application, actually selecting the members and potentially hiring an outside expert who could help get this off the ground in the first year. So, those are the draft proposals and suggestions. And if you have questions, I welcome them, but again, just I'm representing our larger committee and just thank you for the opportunity to have discussions and to brainstorm what might possible, what could next steps look like.
You guys laugh, I think we'll be.
No, I mean, I, it's a psychic type of.
Sorry.
No, I mean, just, I guess I could just say, you know, thank you for the work that's gone into this. It gives our administration sort of a good head start, sort of thinking about, you know, how to influence this. And so, I just appreciate the work that has gone into the renovation. Like, we've discussed in previous meetings, I think sort of creating a safe space for students is a great sort of tangible way that we can, some of the things we can talk about in practice. So, I appreciate the head start you give the administrators who, they can pick this up and figure out, you said, so, okay, this is the details, but what's a thing like this might look like? I don't have any questions, though.
Yes. Agreed, agreed. And that's where I, as we want as a group, everybody fully recognizes, these are brainstorms that came out from the families and from the people that are on the committee, but, you know, truly, it's up to the people that are going to be feet on the ground doing it as to what makes sense. But we thought if we can help work through ideas around different pieces to possibly help streamline it, so that we kind of went through the model through, because some of it was a model, to work through that timeline and stuff like that. And whatever you guys choose to do it, then hopefully this will be helpful.
Thank you. Great. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. You have to start, you have to start somewhere. I, I, whether the stakes are changed, but you put stakes in the ground, so you reach the next one.
Thank you, Robin, for willing to be a volunteer.
No, for our.
Here's the bracing.
Thank you, everybody.
I wanted to say thank you to, I know you gave up a lot of sweat. I know it's time. I know questions, but I gave up a lot of sweat, I could be in this. This is still, many meetings and many hours. Now, I think you guys, there's people that aren't here that contribute to this as well. So, thank you again. I think Mr. Anderson's point, it's great that you guys have thought through, you know, not the next steps, but just kind of the house and what is and things like that, which is really important, which would be asked, because it is, you know, miraculous and it gives us all our information, it's the house is a bad, so I think it's been coming on us, the board, then to work with Mr. Hook and figure out how we can operationalize this and make it work. And that's our, we really appreciate it.
Let us know, we can help you out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have two other committee reports and Miss Stacy has both of them.
Yes. The Budget and Finance Committee met on October 29th. They got to endure my five-year forecast presentation that those of you that were at the board meeting got to hear. So, they enlightened me, some of them actually, it was their second time hearing it, so I especially apologize to those people. And then, we also discussed our sub shortage, which we have that resolution tonight, will hopefully help with that. And then, we also discussed the Patricia McCandless Scholarship Fund and how the scholarships will be awarded for at least the first year and then when we're going to see if we need to make any changes with that group. The minutes for that are already posted online. Thank you, Scott, for doing that. And then, also, the financial insurance team, our fifth team, they met yesterday. And we partnered with the Doris Bredmiller, who helped us kind of really take a deep And we partnered with the Doris and Brenda who helped us kind of really take a deep dive into our insurance costs and looking for different ways our costs can even, you know, just what is being offered industry-wise. They're very helpful and they are the ones that actually kind of facilitate our FITTE. And we went through about an hour-long presentation, a deep dive of our 2020, 2021 Intelligence Report, which was basically an analysis of all of our claims and costs. It was very enlightening, a lot of really good information. So next steps for us as an administrative team is we're going to go back and kind of look at some of the bigger items, try to strategize on how we can begin to maybe put some things in place to try and reduce our places that we're going for. So those minutes are also online already.
Yeah, I did want to add something on the FIT, so I think it was a great presentation. I think that's the first time they've actually been able to finally give us our claims, too, which was really helpful. But one thing that stuck out to me was I think this is the first time that they've pretty much come out and said we may be better self-insuring, which that's a pretty significant change for us, but we're still, we're still operating on loss, even after the injuries we took last year, which granted was not the only thing that was, but they gather Anderson's numbers and even Stacy's new stop loss and that ended up dropping her costs, which I mean, you've got to be like, you think this actually works out mathematically, but I think we are. So I think it's something you probably want to really consider because otherwise we're getting continuously the mercy of this larger people we're in, and our costs are just going to keep going out of place. I don't, I've looked at a lot of data, but I still walk out of there having no idea why we, as a organization, tend to be under cost. I cannot plan, and this is my day job, too. I just.
I was just going to ask, why is it that we're at that, but you don't know.
Well, part is the pooling point. That's the, that's our biggest drive. The EPC has a pooling point, pooling point of $700,000. So you have to reach $700,000 in annual claims per person before the stop loss insurance program.
But that's, that's actually, that's not abnormal in the commercial world, so again, I don't know. This is like something going on. We did also go through in the short term, some other ideas. They're going to do an analysis for us to look at our brand drugs then and see if we can push folks over to the bloodline generics, which is nothing more than, I'm taking the generic version of my blood pressure medicine, then it's the exact formulation technically that's, that may be an opportunity, that saves us a lot for how this money is spent. But again, this is, that was I think, again, going back to self-insure, because it doesn't have to work out mathematically, but we may be able to make a point. So we'll need to talk about that in the future. So those would be it. Any other, does anybody have any comments on any of the committee reports, the comments?
No, just that we were, we've been self-insured, then we got, so all these things are, they just, yeah, have some work, so you, you just have to do, look into everything, it's all about timing. But, yeah, we did that, but you have a couple catastrophic illnesses.
And we have, that's also part of our mission. Okay. Item 5.10, I don't think we have the other business, which is Stacy's treasurer report.
Yes. The first item I have is approval of the October 2021 financials. We're starting to get to the point where things are going to level off, so there's not a lot of things that are out of order coming from October through December, even into January, except for the major piece, if revenue will fall off because we're not receiving taxes anymore until around the beginning of February. So we had 4.7 million in expenditures. Oh, my bad. Bad thing today. So we had 4.7 million in expenditures, but only 1.5 million in revenue for the month of October. So obviously, you'll see our cash balance dwindling from here because we'll have our normal level of expenditure, but we won't have our normal level of revenue. They are a little bit late on the worldwide control step. Typically, we see that in October, we have not received even as of today. It's about $2 million, so we're a little bit late on that. So right now, we're currently running at $150,000 a day to educate. So at the close of October, we had about $13.8 million, which is about 86 days of operating cash on hand. The main significant things that we're seeing so far driving costs is our fuel costs are up, our sub costs are down, obviously, because we have to get subs. So payroll is a little bit higher for us, having to pay our staff to cover loss plans and things like that. Overall, we're pretty steady and there's nothing at the board there that I wasn't already expecting. So the detailed committee reports, though, are on board, I'm sure anyone's seen, they're also posted on the treasurer's page. And then our next item is the approval of the five-year forecast. It's exactly the same as the one I presented at the last board meeting. Then we have a few athletic ones, we'll go to other approvals. So we have approval, item 6.4, approval of a donation of $75 from ladies skate creations to be used towards the spring row competition cheer. 6.5, approval of a donation of $4,360 from the Sens from the spring row athletic boosters to be used towards the spring row athletic camera. There are a list of the teams and those donations are going towards that are looking over. Item 6.6, approval of a donation of $9,507 from the spring row athletic boosters to be used towards competition cheer mats. Item 6.7, approval of donation of $100 from LCK to be used towards the spring row softball program. And item 6.3, approval of $100 from BKA to be used towards the spring row softball program. To get them straight. So, and then item 6.8 will be approval of all of this right now.
Item 6.8, approval of item 6.1 through 6.7, can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Boba.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath.
Yes.
Stukey.
Abstain.
Palage.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Item 6.9, approval of a donation of $1,250 to be used towards the model program. There's a list of donors on there as well. Item 6.10, approval of $100 from the Wayne Pramon Hall to be deposited in the Wayne Pramon Scholarship Fund. And then item 6.25.
Item 6.11, approval of item 6.9, 6.10, can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved. Okay.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes. Stukey.
Yes.
Palage. Good.
Yes.
Section seven, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, seeking approval for items 7.1, 7.4, presented by Mr. Rhodes.
Item 7.5, approval of 7.1, 7.4, can I have a motion to approve this?
Seven.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Boba.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes. Stukey.
I need to abstain, correct?
Yes.
Abstain.
Palage.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Mr. President, sorry.
You're up.
I am seeking approval of 8.1, which is the personnel report for November. And 8.2 is the resolution for flexibility.
Can I have a motion to approve items 8.1 and 8.2?
So moved.
Boba.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes. Palage.
Yes.
Stukey.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
And 8.3 is our athletic report for November.
Item 8.4, approval of our athletic report, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Questions, comments? Okay. Boba.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes. Stukey.
Abstain.
Palage.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval on the flower touch boards for elementary classrooms and smart boards for secondary classrooms.
Can I have a motion to approve item 9.1?
So moved.
Any comments? Yeah, thank you for judging on that so quickly. Appreciate it.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes. Stukey.
Yes.
Yes. Section 10.
Seeking approval, Mr. Board President and Board members, for the approval of the contract with side effects as well as the approval of the contract with Capitol Windows, items 10.1 and 10.2.
Can I have a motion to approve item 10.3?
So moved. Second.
Appreciate you guys being on the contract with side effects, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boba.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Section 11, just the board member comments, you start with this guy.
First, I want to thank the Eagle Scout, who clearly it's a lot of work when they do that, it's me to get back to the school, Alex, and your last thing, to what Lena spoke You know, I think that's something that I've heard other situations happening, that it's something we need to continue to be aware of, you know, hope and pray that it never gets to the point where it didn't even taught. But like you said, I do appreciate the fact that we value it like we do in our district. And we need to continue to be the voice for the students and the families that are experiencing I just wanted to say a little bit about Beth J, because if you're on social media at all, you've seen the impact that Ms. J had on students and many, a lot of students in the arts and in music are kind of finding their own journey. And it was just amazing to read students reflecting on their time of her, students that just didn't know where they would fit, students with a disability, students that felt like they couldn't be accepted anywhere, and Ms. J knew that. And whether it was way down in fifth grade, when she would go into the building and she would find those kids, and somehow they would just go to one little choir and then they were in like all the choirs because she would convince them, this is where you need to be. And you hear about teachers like that, and she was just a staple here. And you go to our productions and you think, how can you, how could somebody pull something like that off, but she did year after year after year. And the people, like somebody had posted something, I think the person's close to 30 years old, and she talked about when she was 11 years old and she was new to Sword Village, and the impact that Ms. J had on her. And she, and Ms. J drove like three hours just recently because she performed in something and Ms. J went and saw her and threw her up after saying, I'm so proud of you. So huge loss to our district, to our students, and just the staff here at the high school. And not even just the high school, because she just, she went down through all of our buildings. She impacted kids and staff throughout our entire district in her whatever 30-some years here. So I appreciate the moment of silence and just the recognition to her. She was just a very, very special lady to many people and truly an angel and somebody that will have a lifelong impact on many souls. You talk about somebody that is, that impacts lives and saves lives. She truly, truly is one of those teachers.
I also want to thank the young man for his work out there, seeing how the pond was originally made and what it's turned into. It's really nice. Thank you for the donations, there were quite a few of them tonight, and starting our winter season in sports, so good luck to our winter teams. Also, about Beth, I taught here with her probably 20 years, maybe a few more. We went to high school together, my wife and I, we went to the same high school, back with Fairmont East, was part of the academy system that's combined. Yeah, I did, like you said, and what a lot of our students said, she took things like the musical, started that years and years ago, and just got better every year. She'll be sort of as a friend and as a colleague.
Thanks for, to Alex for presenting this building out there, which is pretty amazing. And to come present in front of a group of people in and of itself is pretty impressive. If he had his choice, he probably wouldn't have done that, but that was a growing experience for any young person. And then, just about that, just, and I didn't know her, obviously personally, real well with the exchange clause, but Lisa's right, you know, you want to, you don't want to think you make a difference in this world. She obviously did. And maybe all of us ought to take pause next time something happens where we react in a manner that might have been a little better, which we might think about less important in this life while you're here. And it might not, whatever you're worried about might not be as important. And I didn't, with our friend Ed here from the newspaper, I didn't know if either you or Scott shared with you what that big contribution and donation. I think that's a nice story, I don't know if you'd be interested in that, but it's a good story, and I'm sure it's happened elsewhere, but pretty, pretty, pretty neat. So I don't know, if you didn't want to be having a little time, maybe I'll wait to hear you about that. That's it.
Yeah, again, good to answer your hearing. Alex came and presented the delivery, this is not the public speaking department, but did an fantastic job. And we've got the whole line from Eagle Scout Rockettes, as that is very well aware, and you know, the district's very blessed to have, you know, a man like that in a district like that. So thank you. Big thanks to you, and you guys have a lot of work with that. And again, I know that was many meetings, there are time away from family, and that's not enough, so thank you and appreciate your involvement there, too. Yeah, in terms of, as Janice, I didn't know her either, but you know, the one thing this Beth said so well, probably it's true, it's, you know, you think about 30-plus decades of impacting kids' lives, and it's, I mean, it's a huge milestone, it's great, but you know, I don't know what you can say that she's been a nature of a setback on literally generations of people's lives, so you know, I should always sort of wish you the best, so. It's funny, great meeting, and thanks, everybody, and thank you for, Mr. Stacy and Mr. Hook. What is, we'll wrap it up. So item 12.1 is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bath. Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, we're adjourned, thank you.